Thank you for joining us. The Columbian Senatorial Board is pleased to welcome candidates for Evergreen School Board Position Three. I'm Greg Jamie, the Editorial Page Editor, a member of the Editorial Board. I'll let the other board members introduce themselves.
Hello, again, I'm Colleen Keller, an Assistant News Editor of the Columbian and a member of the Editorial Board.
I'm Craig Brown, I'm the Editor of the Columbian in Columbian.com.
Uh, Ben Campbell, Publisher of the Columbian.
Right, and um, let's see, uh, we also have a reporter sitting in, listening in on this. And he might be writing about this meeting or might want to speak with you later. And as mentioned, we are recording this, we will post it unedited on our website and our YouTube channel for the benefit of our readers. So, uh, with that, we'll get to the candidates. Please take one to two minutes, introduce yourselves, explain why you are running for this position. And we'll start with Gary.
Yeah, I'm running to increase the quality of education for our Evergreen students. You know, I regularly attend the board meetings and, you know, came for some different issues and then soon after just kind of saw a lack of transparency within the board and just saw some, a little bit of dysfunction and kept attending and also learned soon after how poorly we were doing academically compared to other school districts in the, in the county. You know, I just started sharing those concerns as well. And I also came up with some, you know, solutions I thought would be good to look at and, you know, it just seems like, you know, you come to the board meetings, you speak out, but it doesn't, you know, seem to go anywhere. And, you know, I think a lot of people get a little frustrated, they come to the board meetings and they share their heart and concerns and, you know, really, you don't see where it ever gets any traction. You know, I can get into more into that, but, um, you know, my, I have a daughter at home and when the pandemic hit, she was at Endeavor Elementary, my youngest, I had two older daughters go through the Evergreen system. And she was there, she's on the autism spectrum, high functioning and, you know, she had an IEP. And when the pandemic hit, for good or bad, we kind of, all parents saw, you know, kind of the in behind the scenes of what's going on in the classroom. And we saw the curriculum, we saw the teaching methods, we saw the classroom discipline or lack of. And, you know, when we went back to in-person teaching, my wife and I talked about it and we decided we would go with Home Choice Academy where my wife and I would be the teachers and we'd use the school's Chromebook and, you know, the lessons from the school. And my daughter really excelled at that and, you know, we enjoyed being, you know, invested in that part of her life. I was an accountant, retired early, was fortunate enough too. And with my older daughters, I was always pretty busy with work and, and other activities and, you know, just didn't have the time to invest like I could now with my youngest daughter. So, you know, I'd say that, you know, investing in your children, you know, in their, their lives, you know, teaching is probably the greatest, most rewarding, you know, endeavor you can have in your life. And, you know, teachers as well, you know, they're investing in children and that's very rewarding. You know, just as far as Evergreen goes, uh, we need to see these academics come up. You know, they're, they're the worst in the district, we need to, you know, I've got some plans for that and, yeah, see us do better. So, that's why I'm.
Great, thank you. And Victoria?
So, as you know, I've been on the board for a while and, um, I've seen the evolution of our community. Um, I've always said that what happens in our community is what's reflected in our schools. And that has never been more apparent than this last few years. Um, and I think the pandemic pretty much just put a magnifying glass on a lot of the issues that we were seeing develop. As you know, nationwide, we've got some pretty significant learning losses and it's not unique to Southwest Washington. It, it's pretty much nationwide. So, as we started seeing the data shifting, um, early on, we went into strategic planning mode and I, I brought you a copy of our strategic plans, you'd have that. In looking at how do we take the situation we have now and, and bring those scores up, I do wanna kind of, um, remind people that one test is not a clear picture of everything that goes on in a school. And it's definitely a measurement and we use that measurement, but there's other methods to measure the success or not of a student. One of the things that we're noticing and that we're seeing and I brought, I'm not leaving this big old thing, I just got it yesterday, actually. This is one study done in one school that's talking about academic achievement as it pertains to social, emotional. Because what we are seeing is a dramatic difference in the mental health needs of our students. And this was done by a team of people, I was actually on this team, this was at Burton Elementary. And it talks a lot about, um, how to engage families, how to engage students in what's happening at school and how do we deal with their social, emotional. And it was led by the two counselors in that school and it's being submitted for national recognition. For a very, um, interesting new program that's happening nationwide, having to, centering on social, emotional learning. So, and you'll see that reflected in our strategic plan. You cannot teach math one way as Gary's kind of implied before. It, you have to look at every individual student, you know, a lot of us remember school and think we know school, but it's not the same school. Even when you younger people, Ben, um, it's different. And I know I look at what, having been on the board as long as I have, I've seen the kind of this historical change in things and we went through a very, um, great period of time of, of school improvement, we brought in Gila, you know, Health and Biosciences High School. Giving opportunity, we have our Home Choice Academy because we believe students and parents should have options for their students. Most recently, we have the, um, skilled trade center, which is a partnership with the home builders, um, locally. And is already proving to be a wild success with our kids. We have to look at education in a more progressive, interesting way to keep kids engaged. And you also cannot avoid dealing with the social needs of, and emotional needs of our kids. It used to be that you could do that, but not anymore. You know, it, it's too challenging.
Uh, thank you, and we'll get into some of the specifics and all that, uh, coming up. Uh, let's start with one of the big issues both locally and nationally is there's a lot of discussion about school curriculums. Gary, what are your thoughts on the curriculum in Evergreen and what would you do differently?
Well, um, first off, Evergreen is averaging thirty-three percent overall in the three academics for O S B I. And Camus is averaging seventy percent in the three academics right next door. Uh, I know there are socioeconomic differences and I put that into play as well. And that does reduce Camus' percentages down, but they're still well over like fifty-four percent in math where they're, they were sixty-four, but with our same low income status projected on them, they dropped down, but it's still fifty-four percent compared to ours at the time, twenty-five. And it's just, you know, comparing apples to apples, they're still, you know, light years ahead of us and.
So, what would you do differently?
Well, I wanna know first, let's look at, um, their curriculums, K through twelve, compare them to ours. See where there are differences, is that part of the disparity or reasons for part of the disparity? Second, let's talk with their staff, principals, you know, get some, you know, what best practices are they doing, what can we learn from them? Third, I do wanna look at our teachers, um, starting with math since that is where we're struggling the most. And let's look over the last two or three years at their percent of students meeting standards. If we're averaging, well, it was twenty-five, it just went up to twenty-six point nine. But if we're averaging down there, you know, which, you know, look at the teachers, some are probably averaging fifty percent or better. I'm not saying that's great, but compared to twenty-five or twenty-six percent, yeah, it is. So, what can we learn from them, what, you know, can we put into place that they're doing? Also, if we're averaging twenty-five, twenty-six percent, some, probably averaging ten percent or less. And we gotta know, okay, what do they need? Do they need more classroom help? Do they need more training? You know, do they need more classroom discipline from the students? I mean, there's, it'll identify areas of strengths and concerns and where to focus and where to get extra support. So, you know, that's what I would do, but, but as far as the curriculum.
Something like that, uh, uh, one complaint that we often hear from teachers is that they have to teach to the test. Would that approach encourage teachers to teach for a test just so they can get their class scores up more?
Well, it would, you know, overall, it will help to, you know, if they're able to perform better at that, they will be better, you know, prepared to enter the world. You know, they, we wanna graduate kids that are proficient in math. And, you know, the test isn't the end-all, but it is our best measurement of comparing us to schools not only in our district, in our state, but around the country. And, you know, you gotta go with, you know, what you have and this is our best measuring stick. So, you know.
Okay, and thank you, I, I, we'll, uh, Victoria, your thoughts on the curriculum?
Well, as Gary knows, cause he, I gotta give it to Gary, he does come to board meetings, which is rare for, for most parents. We have just adopted a new curriculum, um, just over a year ago and are just in the, in the first year of implementation of that curriculum.
We, overall, or for math specifically?
For math specifically, the year before that, we changed our reading curriculum and are already seeing really good results happening from that. But these are all, you know, pretty new considering that we're just getting back in from COVID and, and kind of getting back into the norms of, of regular school. So, we changed the curriculums. Who led some of that and who helped us with the strategic plan was a, the former Deputy Superintendent from Camus who came in and we're not copying Camus because we're a very different district, um, demographically and the needs of our students are different than the Camus students. But she was really instrumental in assisting us in developing this plan, looking at those curriculum methods and revising what we were doing, um, for academics. She's now been snatched from us by, and she's now the head of the Department of Education for Oregon. But we, the year that we had her with us has been great and we've brought in some other people that are helping us that are very strong in curriculum. I don't like to be compared to a district that's completely not, that's not even close to Evergreen. The demographics are completely different, the socioeconomics are very different, the size of the district is very different. We do as a board engage with other boards from other districts in, in our area. And one of their board members actually works in our district as a counselor. And so, we have those conversations. But it's an, it's not an apples-to-apples situation and never will be, it's just, it's just different. We have a much larger free and reduced lunch, which is a huge difference. We have more mobility in our district, so kids are coming and going quite a bit. So, we have some schools that start with this certain cohort of kids and by the end of the year, it's a whole, whole new cohort. So, it's a constant kind of movement of kids and that's something that we're trying to address on a regional level because we share each other's kids. And one of the things that we have done in our own district is they'll move around oftentimes looking for better pricing for rent, things of that nature, is bringing, um, a commonality to all of our schools and having a, a curriculum and a kind of a, a language about learning that our kids are hearing in every single school. So, if they go from, say, Burton Elementary over to Millplain, it's not gonna be new when they get there. And it used to be, you know, every school kind of had some autonomy. And, and we like teachers to be inventive and have, have some creativity in their teaching, but we still need to have some fidelity to a curriculum that all of our kids understand.
Okay, I'm gonna stop you there, I'm sorry. Uh, Gary, real quick, would it make more sense to compare Evergreen to the Vancouver District rather than Camus?
Um, you could compare it all the way around, we are the worst in Clark County academically speaking. So, however you slice it, we're, we're coming up on the bottom. And, um, Victoria had mentioned about math, you know, um, you know, they teach five ways to do addition, five ways to do subtraction, five ways to do multiplication. And, you know, and I, my wife and I, when we were doing this with my daughter, she was getting confused, she's like, just teach me one way, I'm getting confused. And, you know, I, I can understand, yes, some, you know, students may need more than one or two, but my belief is one or two and then if the kid still is having trouble, then maybe, you know, give them some special, you know, time learning more ways and rather than an entire class of twenty, kind of, you know, giving them too many ways really and not putting in on the one or two best and, and simply, simplest ways to be able to do the application. And I also would like to see curriculum more accessible to parents. I know the growth and development, um, back, I think it was about four years ago, I called the school, just wanted to take a look at it and I was told, oh, you just missed the date in October, the next date is in March. And I was like, really? I thought that waits five months? She said, yeah, we only have it two times a year, you can feel it next year. It should be, I would think, more accessible to parents.
Thank you, correct. So, how much, uh, uh, blame should the teacher shoulder, you know, for the low test scores, Gary?
You know, um, I really feel for the teachers, um, you know, they need more classroom help, they need more classroom, you know, ability to, you know, discipline the classroom more. A lot of times their hands are tied behind their back. I know with the recent strike, they were really concerned about, um, classroom help and trying to get more classroom help in their contract. And, you know, if you, I would suggest everybody watch September twelfth's School Board Meeting. The first twelve comments, I was number twelve, but first twelve, we all, um, really just hit on safety and student safety and classroom support. With the budget cuts, with, um, there was nineteen million budget cuts at the beginning of, in March. That drew out three hundred people to the board meeting, over fifty people were upset and spoke out. And the budget cuts were mainly, you know, admin was somewhat kept intact, it was more aggressively on closer to student positions. And, you know, the parents and, and teachers alike were upset about that. And then likewise, when this, um, strike happened, I thought it was about the money initially because when going out to the website, that's what the website led you to believe, they had all the, you know, Evergreen's got the highest paid teachers in the district and, and they do, I mean, that's a good thing. I can see that's a positive, we also have by far the highest paid administration. And then also, um, but where's the support for the schools? We've been doing this neighborhood schools model, taking out the special ed kids, putting them in the general population and they're acting out and there isn't enough, uh, help in the classroom, the teachers aren't specifically trained, some of them, to deal with those, uh, issues and, yeah, if you watch the September twelfth, you can hear over and over, and I heard this, that out on the line on the strike, talking to, I went to nine different schools, talked with hundreds of teachers and it was corroborated. I mean, teachers getting hurt by these students and, um, classrooms being trashed over and over and they have to take all the kids and send them to the library or, or send them elsewhere. And it's really hurting the learning environment and it, it's also dangerous. And we can't get these paraeducators in because they're, we have so many open positions and sadly, they're on the bottom rung of the pay scale in the area. They're a different, you know, bargaining, so it's.
Did you use the word dangerous just a minute ago, that kind of, uh, I wanted, that struck me as, are some of the classrooms at Evergreen dangerous?
You know, if you watch that September twelfth board meeting, you decide for yourself. I, I'm not in the classroom, I can only go by what's shared by concerned parents and teachers.
Gary, what, what are your reactions with this?
I would say that, like I said earlier, the social, emotional needs of our Kansas are, is greater than it's ever been. And I do agree with Gary, we need more supports in the classroom. Unfortunately, we can't find the people, just like you, we have banners up looking for people, you guys have one here and just about every industry around. So, looking for those folks, we, you know, we've cut that need in half about, um, through our efforts and are still working diligently on that. As it pertains to the budget, the district office is the smallest part of the budget percentage-wise. And obviously, the classroom is the biggest where it should be. And they take the cuts at a greater proportion to other budget than we do in any other area. But some of those positions are just not, um, things that we can do without. And I'm always so curious about when people try and, and say, oh, it's this heavy central office. We're not heavy, we're actually kind of in the mid-range for districts of our size and have never been on the high side, um, budget-wise compared to other districts, um, in the state. I thought it was kind of ironic, the other day I saw in the news, in your coverage of CEO pay. And when you look at this, this pay of CEOs out there in the public and in the private sector and look at the nonprofits, for the organization the size that we have compares to like the hospitals and it's our central office salaries are a fraction of what these other CEOs are out there making and even people in the nonprofit sector. So, I wouldn't say that they're overpaid, um, I would say that they have skills that we need to do the kind of changes and systemic changes that need to happen. It's why having the right superintendent in is critical and that's, you know, a duty that's probably the biggest duty of a board is to make sure that you have the right person at the helm. And I felt very confident with John Boyd, um, he has made a real difference in the approach that we have to curriculum, the approach that we have to the classroom. So, yes, we need more support, we also need more funding from the state as it pertains to support staff. It's woefully underfunded and would only, we would only have what we have because of the graciousness of our public who supports our levies. Special ed, just special ed is underfunded by thirteen million dollars. And that's a huge group. And I do have to make a correction on a perception about what's happening in the classroom. Yes, there are some things happening in classrooms, we have younger and younger students acting out in ways we've never seen before. But what's ironic about all of this is that when you look at who these students are, the majority of them are not special ed kids. They're regular ed kids that are coming off of couple of years of COVID. Many of these younger ones haven't been socialized into public, being out in the public, learning, working with others, being a team, um, having just the normal expectations of how we behave at school. And that's a concern, it's a big concern of ours.
And I, I, I wanna go back for a minute, you said probably the most important thing that the school board does is having the right person at the helm.
Mm-hmm.
But it took several tries for you to find, what was the reason for that? Did the board not properly vet candidates or?
We did vet our candidates, I mean, when we had our, the superintendent, our last superintendent had been with the district for twenty-two years, was a very good financial leader, had been exemplary employee and at the time with all of the kind of financial challenges that were coming, we knew that the budgets were gonna decrease, we were looking at a levy cliff because of the changes in the state funding formulas. We wanted somebody who really, really understood the financial and we brought him on. And as you know, because it was reported in, in the paper, we had some management issues and we were losing some key staff at the higher levels that we felt concerned about. We, we brought in, um, a team of superintendents from their organization to do a management review, they made recommendations. And then some other things surfaced and we had an investigation and that was public, very public. And you, we just could not support a superintendent that was not operating in a way that we felt was ethical.
What's the timeline, how many superintendents?
We had, we had John Dieter for ten years, I want, and then he retired. And then we had John Stich and then Mike Merlino and now John Boyd.
And he, I, when did, uh, Dieter retire?
He retired, gosh, it's been what, six years or so, I can't remember, it's all a blur.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, so, and he was great and, you know, he was a, a great stabilizer. And actually, to his credit, John Boyd has met with John Dieter, um, who knows this community inside and out, so that he.
Sorry, I'm gonna stop you there, one more, Gary, do you think that the budget is being managed appropriately?
I kind of, were you gonna talk more about this valuation of superintendent or no?
Uh, what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, you can't have a worse track record right now than the current board in evaluating their last three superintendents. John Stich, they ended up parting ways with him in two thousand nineteen and he walked away with over three hundred thousand dollars for admitting they made a mistake, um, not, but December of twenty twenty-one, so, that's like two, within three years, they parted ways with Mike Merlino and, as well, he had two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars, walk away with him. Currently, you know, the book's still out on Superintendent Boyd, but with, you know, the, the cuts to nineteen million dollar cuts because we're losing students, I understand that. But for it to be, the majority of it be on the closer student positions rather than admin, that was a major concern for a lot of people. And then just recently, the work stoppage and how it was painted as all about the money. I mean, he's not on a, a good footing right now with, with the, you know, community. And the fact that, you know, a year ago, for two years I've been coming to the boards, you know, sharing about the academics, you know, hey, can we put our focus on it? And trying to, and giving them some solutions and then a year ago, October of twenty twenty-two, they rolled out the S I P program and it was touted that it was gonna increase our math, uh, academics from twenty-five percent to thirty-eight percent, thirteen percent. And just a few weeks ago, it was just updated for spring of twenty twenty-three and, you know, I, I told them at the time, this is just scratching the surface or you should be attacking this from many ways and I've given you a few already, possible solutions. And big reveal, it went up one point nine percent to twenty-six point nine. So, thirteen percent, one point nine percent, yeah, it's not getting there, yeah, there's still time, maybe you can catch up some more. But even my scratching the surface may have been optimistic because it's, it's not getting the job done right now. And, yeah, we need to attack this from multiple sides, but what was your next question about the budget?
About the budget, is it being managed effectively?
Well, again, I would look to get more pairs and would have to, we're gonna have to cut more admin.
The, uh, uh, as far as the paraeducators, um, I think not only in Evergreen, but it's very difficult to find people to do that. How, would you just wave a magic wand and.
Well, we're on a, no, we're on a, the low end of the, in the district as far as what we're paying paraeducators. Whereas teacher salaries were the high end and, and admin salaries were definitely the high end. So, that's, we gotta get some money down there, bring them up to where we can attract and keep them. And a lot of them don't wanna come here either because we're short so much and things can be violent sometimes in the classroom, I mean, watch September twelfth's board meeting, I mean, the minutes. I, I, I don't wanna share things that I say, you can hear it from parents and teachers. And it's better coming from them than from me. I mean, I hear them, I'm listening, but it's better for you guys to view it yourself. I mean, go out and talk to the teachers when they're, walking the strike, that's their concern. The majority of them are out there because they need more pairs, they need more classroom help, they're not getting it, they want it in the contract. And rather than being all about the money, it was more all about classroom help. And, yeah, we need to find the money, where do you find it? Sorry, you know, we've got a superintendent, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, we've got an assistant superintendent. Sorry, you know, we've got a superintendent, three hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We've got an assistant superintendent, two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. You know, there's.
And what what's the overall budget for the district?
Uh, four hundred and twenty million, three hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six.
Says something right.
He's an accountant. He he gets it.
So, but you know, it it really does come down to money though. Is Victoria dressed, there's, there's needs.
I think a school or two maybe might need to be considered to close.
Yeah, that's my question is how, what specifically would you recommend to free up money to pay paraeducators more so they can fill those jobs? And where is that money gonna come from?
Admin and the possible closure of a school or two, an older school or two. I mean, we're, we've lost thirty-five hundred students over the last four years. You know, we also, at the same time, we're building nice new schools. And the thought was if we build it, they will come. But it's been, well, we're building it and they're leaving. So, and and part of it isn't due in fact to the academic scores. People are seeing this. I've I've called literally thou- a thousand people at least in the last two months. And I've, a number of them have told me, well, you know, I live in the Evergreen School District, that's why I'm calling. But I've got a boundary exception. We're going to Battle Ground, we're going to Chemist. Because of those academic scores, you know, think people are, parents that are in the know or maybe can't afford pri- private school and don't have time or, you know, things necessary to do homeschool, they're taking control in other ways, so.
Which schools would you close?
Um, I have, that I would have to really do a lot of research. I mean, that would, that's not a decision you can make. I mean, we've got thirty-nine schools, so, um, you know, I would, might not mention Legacy. Because I've looked at Legacy's academic scores and they're like averaging eight percent. Overall, in the math, it's less than three. Science, I think it's nine, eight, and English is twelve. I mean, it's, it's only three hundred and sixty-six students, but you know, it's like something's not working there. I mean, I know it's a specialized type of school, but whatever specialization we're trying to do there academically, it's beside the question.
Uh, Victoria, why is enrollment dropping?
Well, research has shown that we've got, um, keep, a lot of people moving out of this area due to the ho- cost of housing. And in our side of the district in particular, you're seeing a lot of our newer housing tends to be for adults. We have a lot of seniors in our side. A lot of our, um, the demographics of our neighborhoods are starting to get older. And we've seen, I've seen this before. We, you see a neighborhood kind of age, then as they, as those folks retire and move out, move on, whatever they do, go to assisted living, where I'm, I can't wait to go to. They, then the new families kind of come in and it's very cyclical. Birth rates are down, um, which is interesting. So I thought there'd be a big spike after COVID. But, cause I had one of my little grandkids born to a COVID baby. But, um, we're seeing those kinds of demographics. Definitely, there's, there's flight though from, from, um, the area in general. I mean, we're not the only district that's losing kids. I mean, that's pretty consistent across. So I think that's something to, that we're just, you know, having to deal with.
So what do, what do you guys, what are your thoughts or how do you respond if a parent comes to you and and says, i- it's not academically up to my standards. I'm taking my kids to a different district or a private school. Uh, what do you think of that?
Well, I don't like it, obviously. I don't want a parent to feel like that. But you also, if you look, and we, and this has always been true. You look at the demographics of each of our individual school and it's a very, it's very different depending on the area that you live in. And that's just, that's normal. I mean, that's just how it is. And of course, we really want to stay focused in those areas where they have high mobility, they have more poverty. I I find it interesting. It's always, um, when we talk about getting rid of administrators, district office isn't just made up of administrators. We have, we have one person that, and it's only one and it should be more, who's dealing with our homeless kids. We have over a thousand kids that are considered homeless. Um, we didn't have homelessness like that fifteen years ago. But it takes somebody to manage those kids, make sure that they're getting their needs met, their rights are being met because there's laws regarding homeless students. Our English language learners is dramatically higher. And in order for us to receive federal funding for E L L education, we have to have people who manage that program. And as that program gets bigger and bigger because of the influx of students that don't speak English, you have to have specialists in that area that are managing that program. Special ed is higher than it's ever been. And those are all dictated positions that we are required to have to manage the programs and the funding that we receive from the state and from the, um, federal government. As far as closing schools, we are looking at that and have been for the last couple of years. But you can't just shut a school down overnight. It's a community action that has to happen. Because I don't care which school it is, if you close somebody's neighborhood school down, they're gonna be upset. And so will the staff. And so how do you do that in a way that is fair? That is sensible to the system, doesn't, because when you start closing one or two schools even in a district our size, it literally is a domino effect. You're gonna have to re-boundary the whole district. And so it's not something you can just cavalierly close a school down.
And I don't think, Gary, you weren't saying that.
Well, I think in legacy case, that's a specific, it's small, but it's students specifically choose to go there for certain reasons. And it, that would be probably the easiest.
And guess what? That would be the most damaging thing to do to those kids. I've watched that develop. I've watched that go from some portables with kids that rarely graduated to a much higher graduation rate. And instead of seeing three or four kids over at the auditorium at Mountain View where they come and do their little graduation, and now we're seeing a hundred kids graduating. These are kids who are dealing with some of the most difficult circumstances. There are homeless kids, there are kids that are parents. There are kids that come from very challenging, there's a lot of foster care kids in that program. This is, and when you go in, I have been in there and met with kids and they will tell you it changes their lives. They are so connected to their teachers. I would never in a million years close, close down Legacy. That would be a big mistake.
Uh, I was just gonna say, uh, you said they're increasing our graduat- the graduation rates have increased. But again, only eight percent meeting academic standards, so I mean.
On one test.
Well, that was English.
Colin, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, both of you had mentioned in both here and in some your other public websites, et cetera, about better transparency in the budgeting process and trying to get, uh, folks and the parents and residents of your districts more involved. What precisely or specifically do you have in mind? What would you like to see happen? Victoria, what's your thought with you?
Well, number one, I would really like to see a more transparent bargaining process. Because after going through two strikes and seeing how that rolled out, I know when we put out information, it's the factual information that we have that we will put out. It's not an, it's not a, it's not a video with dramatic little blurbs out there. It is the facts so that people can see them and make decisions for themselves. I can tell you that I believe that the majority of our teachers really did, do care about supports in the classroom. We cared about supports in the classroom. Um, and if you, I think if people were to follow along and have an open process so that people could see what both sides are offering and negotiating, that it would be a different picture.
And so you you've been on the board quite a while. Have you advocated for that open process?
Yes, I have, especially after the strike that we had several years ago. We used to have an amazing bargaining relationship with our people. And it was based on, they called it interest-based bargaining. And I felt like it was a lot more, um, open in many ways. And it didn't just center on a particular period in time when you bargain. It was like always, we're kind of always bargaining as issues come up. And we had great relationships and I miss that. It's a different world now.
No, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on. Gary, how would you improve transparency?
Well, um, it's interesting you mentioned transparency because I've been saying that to the board for two years. We need to be more transparent and in a, um, you've had Rob here just a few weeks ago. But we were both at a candidate forum and the first thing came out of his mouth was, we are not transparent. And he was concerned about, I was his number one concern at that night at least. And I appreciated him saying that. Uh, it's like, yeah, I've been telling the board this for two years. As far as the bargaining process, I would push as far as we can. I mean, it's things I'm gonna have to explore, but to have it's open, why behind closed doors? Why? I'm gonna want to be there. I know Rob said at the last, when you guys interviewed him, well, we can't get involved. We can't say anything because if we affect it in any way, if someone, you know, says, you know, we mentioned something and that's deemed to have affected it this way or that way, it could be legally liable. I understand that. You gotta be very careful. But you're also right or wrong. The board is, you know, gonna be ultimately blamed for the work stoppage or for how the contract negotiations go or how it's perceived. And if if I'm gonna take that blame, I want to be at the process. You know, whether or not I'm allowed to sit at that table, I don't know. Probably, maybe not, but I'm gonna be outside the door. I will be as close as I can to that process. So that's.
So a- aside from the bargaining process, where's transparency lacking?
Um, you know, um, it's been, you know, you just watch the board meetings, you can hear people. I mean, I don't, you know, I can share my concerns, other people have concerns. But, you know, people come up, they share their heart and, you know, like I said, I go again to September twelfth. You know, people shared and the board says, well, we're gonna discuss this. You give us a lot of, a lot to think about and we're gonna come back with some decision. So, you know, my point is, well, you've got board comments time. Why not discuss it there openly within the board? Why do we have to do everything behind closed doors, come back and, you know, just have a discussion while the board's going with concerns that the parents, teachers brought that night? And let's get some things hashed out. Don't go behind closed doors, come back the next meeting, never say a word about it. But then at the end of the meeting, say, well, we're gonna put together a committee and it's gonna take months, three, four months, and we're gonna get, you know, thirty, forty, you know, parents and teachers. And, you know, I understand you want to do that, but let's also get the discussion going ahead of time. Let's, and are we just waiting till people forget about it or they're, they're calmed down? It's like, no, we need to, things, we can do things on the fly some, or at least get the discussion started and not just keep it under wraps for four months.
And I I want to go, Victoria, how would you respond to that?
Well, I'd say that there's lots of how we conduct meetings. If you have a public meeting, you have an agenda that we have to post and you know, we we're required by law to have it posted within a certain amount of time. If you have a meeting about X, but during public comments, Y comes up. But people who are interested in Y didn't know that it was gonna come up, then they've missed the whole conversation. That's why we don't do that. It is about transparency, is making sure that when those comments. And Gary, you know for a fact that nobody comes to board meetings hardly. That group of people on that date were ticked off about, most of them, I like, there's been so many recently, but they're upset for one reason or another. I mean, Rob's opponent only showed up at board meetings when the four athletic directors were getting, we were cutting those in order to save teacher jobs. And he's very much into the athletic scene. And so people come, when I meet with them individually and start sharing with them what's, what we're talking about. You've, you know a lot about what's going on with our test scores because we were very open in public meetings about the status of those test scores and our concerns about them. We were very open. This, and and it's listed in here, the numbers of parents, teachers, administrators, community members that were involved in development of this strategic plan. We've been very transparent. I know that you have met with our superintendent. I'm not gonna call on you yet.
Well, a- actually, I'm going to.
But I've just seen, you know, people have been very, you met with our CFO. I mean, we've given you a lot of time and anybody asks.
Okay, let's give Gary a chance.
No, yeah, I was just gonna say, um, no, I didn't hear the concern about the test scores from the board. I, people have told me, hey, go check out O S P I, see what, you know, and that's when I found out. I I did the research myself. It wasn't, honestly, I did not hear from the board going for about six, three, four, five, six months. That was something, you know, that I, you know, looked into from a concern from someone else said, hey, you might, you might check them out, see how they're doing academically if you're concerned about, you know, other issues that, that might be something that would be even more of a concern.
On a public site that is open to the public.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, kind of continuing the conversation about transparency. Victoria, do you think there are any improvements that the board can make to improve transparency?
Absolutely. Um, we have, I think it's not just about transparency, it's about communication. Because you can be, you can have all the information, because most, just about everything we do is open to public inspection, public. We get people requesting information all the time. We try and get as much as we can on the website so people can, they can access our budget at any time they want to. But a lot of people don't really know where to go or how to do it. And also how to participate in the, in the discussions about these things. So other than coming to board meetings, which now are more open than ever because we do it by Zoom. And so if somebody can't come in, they can watch the board meeting. We've got affinity groups of parents that meet with our staff for various different kinds of things. So that we get information from people that really are concerned about whatever the certain topic is. We are really engaging students more. We have two student board members, board representatives. And there, we're just now getting together a full student advisory team that, you know, we gotta listen to kids. You know, a lot of this work is driven by what kids are feeling, thinking, telling us about school. Superintendent has been putting together a citizens advisory team in conjunction with our other affinity groups. It, it's just about communicate, 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 and it can't be one way. It's gotta be two-way communication we hear. We do hear, and part of my job as a board member is to listen to people who come to a board meeting and share with us their concerns and ideas or whatever. And go back and ask those questions if there's things that give me a question mark. But also, a lot of times we're hearing things we already know. And it's not that we're know-it-alls, it's just that we've been dealing with it. And had people been more engaged prior to a budget cut or prior to, you know, changes in staffing or a strike, they would know too. And it's just how do we get that message out to people so that they have a clear picture of what's going on? We've been talking about the budget, the, the cliff that was coming for several years now. Because after McCleary, it changed the whole funding model and it's not just about losing kids, it's lucky.
I'm sorry, I want to move by. Uh, how can we improve transparency?
Well, in the budget cut that was mentioned, that came out in March, there was no really any information on it other than just, these are the cuts. And I kept, and Chuck was too, what, especially me, I was like, what line item, let's see the line items, let's see where we can look. And we can all, you know, have an understanding of why they're needed here and maybe not here. And that was not available. I met with John.
Victoria, you're saying that's been discussed for years and Gary, you're saying that.
Well, I mean, it may be discussed that you're gonna do a cut, you need to do a cut, but where they specifically cut, that is not discussed. And it was just, you know, thrown on people and that's why people came out.
So how can they improve transparency?
You know, um, talk about it at the board meeting. Hey, we're considering cutting, you know, here, here, here. We want input. We, you know, put it out on the, the website. Don't just say, these are the cuts and there's no numbers behind it. That's why I wanted to see the numbers. I mean, you can't, don't just tell us you, you're laying off, you're giving two hundred people their pink slip and don't. I mean, and it's still a proposed budget. I mean, this is in March and it's not gonna be, uh, first and second reading are in July. It's not gonna be, you know, you know, approved till. It's not gonna be, you know, you know, approved till, what, August it was? So things can change, you know, especially, numbers can move around, you know, from this line to that line. Um, you know, yeah, let's see, give us the nuts and bolts too. Don't just tell us these people are fired or we're cutting here and I, uh, May ninth, I was at the board meeting asking John, can we, can we see the numbers? He said, wow, it's all, it's a pivot table we get from the state and we don't get that number till July. But you're making cuts, obviously you have some numbers that you're basing that on. Just share it, let us, you know, help us to understand.
That's great, thanks. How do you, just, we'll see. Great, uh, we'll, uh, move along, give us your final pitch for why voters should support you and if you, excuse me, feel free to mention any endorsements that you like. Um, we'll start with Gary.
Yeah, I'm gonna read actually from, um, the Washington School Board Association, uh, Washington Schools District Association, WSTA. Uh, the website, the school board standard states, the standards encourage boards to focus on student achievement as their primary responsibility. Evergreen wants the best is now the worst performing school district academically of the nine clock county school districts. Um, I'm gonna also read, yeah, I've got the the stuff right here. 'Cause I took the training in June and I thought it was awesome. I'm like, these guys get it. So their first, there are five core principles, responsible school district governance, number two, communicate, creating conditions, excuse me, creating conditions, no, I just went to three X. Communication and commitment to high expectations for student learning. Okay, thirty-three percent, that's not high expectations for student learning. Uh, creating conditions district-wide for student and staff success. Again, twenty-five or twenty-six percent math, thirty-three overall. Holding the district accountable for student learning, that's number four. Um, I will hold the district accountable. I will do the hard analysis. I wanna help the teachers do better, but also find out which ones need the help. And, you know, we're not putting a Band-Aid doing the S I P program, it's not working. And, you know, the the worst on the le- um, our academic, doing academically are the English language learners. And that's where we need the help the most. And let's, yeah. What else? Uh, why do you wanna vote for me? Well, I'm an accountant, um, like, you know, thirty-five years experience. I will look at, um, things with an academic lens, if it's gonna improve our academics, I'd probably be for it. If it isn't, you know, I understand, you know, you need sports, you need, um, you know, music and art, you know, there are, has to be outlets for the students, creative outlets. However, by and large, we gotta start really attacking this academic and, uh, you know, excuses. You know, the pandemic, we've been dropping every year since two thousand sixteen academically, so the pandemic as an excuse is an excuse. It didn't help, I understand that, but we've been dropping since two thousand sixteen. And to help, as far as save money, um, um, teacher told me, and I've heard other stories like this, but this is just one example. He went to get a loan and he had to get plenty of verification from work, so he sent it to HR and HR sent back saying, well, you need to, you've been at three different jobs in twenty years, so you need to contact this person, this person, and this person to get verification. And that should happen, one person in a matter of minutes. Um, why did, why are they, why is that touching three different admin people? Why? I mean, can't, that can be streamlined. I know this is just one little example, but where else can things be streamlined? Where else can we? I mean, you say one or two admin positions, that's a dozen pairs. You know, I mean, could be, you know, 'cause half of them at least. So, um, yeah, we can do better. I will, I will not rest until Evergreen is academically on par with Canvas. And I may not rest for four years, but that, I'm not gonna be happy. And I'm gonna do whatever we can to get there. And I don't think anyone should be happy. We can do a lot better.
Thank you. Victoria, why should voters support you?
I think voters should support me because I have a very clear and complete picture of what is happening in our district. The challenges, but also the strengths that this district has. And I think that, um, when we're looking at a dynamic that we're in right now, this is not a time to shut things down. Um, we're losing income for multiple reasons that we can all acknowledge. But my opponent ran the campaign against our levy and Vancouver's levy. So he obviously doesn't, for an accountant, doesn't understand why the levies are so critical to all of our schools throughout the state. As we are losing funds, we have to backfill. Nobody a hundred percent funds education. Music is good for kids. It statistically shows that kids who take music are better in math. And we've had, always had very good music programs and that has been a key reason. It also keeps kids in school. Sports keeps kids in school. We know that sometimes it's that one extracurricular activity or that one program that will keep a kid coming to school when other things just won't do it for them. Um, we like to have options, we have those options for our kids. Um, I also, I'm a creative thinker and, you know, I stuck with getting Gila for ten years through all the ins and outs legislatively, funding-wise, and the same thing with the skilled trade center. Those are all things that I can, I'm forward-thinking enough to know. These are areas that are needed in our community. These are things that will get, engage kids and get them into good paying jobs when they leave and they'll have a future. I absolutely believe that we've got to get the test scores up. That's why the board was the catalyst for the strategic plan and and said, this is what we have to have, we have to have a change. Or do, everything's different and we need to move forward with that. And that was board-driven. It it's not, it's it's very easy to look from the outside and think they know all the answers, but this is a complicated situation in a large district with a lot of dynamics that are going on. And I'd like to see the scores go up too, and that's what we're working on. It's all, we're barely into it at this point. Um, and so, you know, we're, the trend is upward, it's not as upward as I would like it to be, but but it's a turn, it's turning. And I think we'll see as as we get the skills that, you know, the new training of teachers, the the challenges that we've been facing will be overcome.
Great, thank you. I do, I wanna clarify one last thing, Gary, did you oppose the levy at Evergreen?
Um, I wrote, excuse me, I submitted, um, for the February of twenty twenty-two and in all honesty, I didn't care if it passed or failed. I mean, that was up to the voters. I wrote it to educate parents, grandparents, and voters of the poor quality of education children were receiving. I was frustrated, I was going to the board meetings, I was sharing, you know, solutions and and not seeing any action. And, you know, when you see no action taken, I just wanted the citizens to cast an informed vote. And the property levy represents eleven percent of the school's budget, eighty-nine percent comes from the state and federal uh, government, from other taxes citizens pay. And this levy is the only portion of the budget that voters have a say on. And the only way to effectively let this board know in the district that they're either pleased or displeased with the quality of education their students are getting. So one definition of insanity is doing the same thing and expecting different results. Voting down the first levy in twenty-six years was a tremendous.
Okay, that's, I just needed that quick answer.
Yeah.
But pulling the rug out from under us, our kids, is not the way to make a difference.
Okay, uh, thank you very much. Okay, it's, thanks to both of you for coming in.
It's doing things that are productive.
The S I P program may not have happened, but.
Great, well, thank you.